Into the reserves of our client's security fund and our lawyer assistance program. Reaching into the reserves is something the legislature had authorized us to do had we not been able to sell the San Francisco building. But we're coming up now to the 2024 legislative year. We're looking at what's going to happen with our 2024 budget and where are we going to be in 2025. And as Leah said, there is no option. As the bar informed the legislature last year, as we discussed with the finance committee a couple of weeks ago, and as you'll be hearing when we turn to the planning session in just a few moments, the bar needs a fee increase for 2025 in order to remain solvent. We will also be discussing in the planning session, and really the focus of that discussion is how we're going to construct a request for a fee increase. But so for the purposes of this item before us right now, what we are seeking is to establish securing a fee increases the legislative priority for 2025. Now, in addition to that as a legislative priority, we are also seeking the board's authorization to pursue affirmative legislative proposals, proposals to enhance public protection, to increase accountability, implement operational and budgetary efficiencies, and enhance access to justice. I apologize in advance, Bridget and I are going to be alternating in what is going to seem to you to be a somewhat haphazard way as we give you some highlights of the specific proposals, but we want to go through some of the proposals that we identified in the agenda item that we are seeking your support to pursue as affirmative legislative proposals.
So if those of you that were here last year will remember that there are some priorities that were adopted last year that have not, were not adopted in the 2024 fee bill. And so some of those we're choosing, we're recommending that we carry over. So one of them is this enhanced bank reporting that will help us with the client protection, client trust account protection program. There was legislative intent language put into the fee bill last year. The legislature wants to continue engaging with stakeholders on this one. It's a very important public protection measure, so we are recommending that we continue with that proposal for this year. And the next one, also a carryover from last year, was something that was recommended by the Ad Hoc Committee on Oversight and Accountability, which would be making specific portions of the Political Reform Act applicable to the state bar, specifically the enforcement mechanism and making the conflict of interest codes comply, our conflict of interest codes comply and be enforceable. So those are the, those are two that were carried over from last year but are still important.
Another in our current efforts to hold ourselves accountable and hold ourselves to standards that other boards are subject to is this proposal for removal of board members for cause. This is an item that was, that came out of the Ad Hoc Committee on Oversight and Accountability reforms. And what we're proposing is something that is akin to language, or in fact copying language that applies to boards under the purview of the Department of Consumer Affairs. In, in, in those instances, the appointing authorities for those boards have the authority to remove board members for continued neglect of duty, incompetence, or unprofessional or dishonorable conduct. And the recommendation out of the Ad Hoc Committee was that similar standards apply to the trustees and allow the appointing authorities expressly to remove trustees in those situations.
Okay. And then we have three proposals that are under the category of operational and budgetary efficiencies. So the first one is the fact that statutorily we have to collect, attorneys must turn in their licensing fees by a certain date and it's in the statute by February 1st. We're asking to amend the statute to give the state bar flexibility on when we can collect those fees because we do have some, a pretty substantial subset of licensees that require a lot of handholding, like they don't, they can't use the computer, they don't, they don't do the electronic payments, and it's taking a lot of staff time to try to handhold those people through the process. So we're trying to, just give us some more flexibility without having that statutory deadline in there that will allow us to focus on, or at least spread out the process during the year.
Next, operational efficiency would be to revise the timeline for when we would have to submit a bar exam evaluation studies. By statute, the, the bar is required every seven years to review the bar exam, to do a standard setting study or a cut score study, to do a content validation study, to, to do a practice analysis, to determine whether the bar exam, the current bar exam needs to be changed. As many of you know, we are right now waiting for action for this, from the Supreme Court on the recommendation of the Blue Ribbon Commission to adopt a new California bar exam. The timeline under the statute would have these reports due, the next set of reports due in early March of 2025. What we don't want to do, assuming the Supreme Court does come down with a recommendation for a new bar exam, is expend any effort doing these studies on the existing exam, which is going to change. And we are unlikely to be able to, timing wise, have all of that work done for, for a new exam by early 2025. So what we'd be proposing to do is extend the timeline. So the next set of those bar exam studies would be, instead of seven years from the last set, seven years from the adoption of the next bar exam.
Okay. And then the last item here is on the Lawyer Referral Service Program, Certification Program. This is something that staff has been doing, a pretty extensive stakeholder engagement effort and redesign focus over the past year to think about how to use LRSs in increasing access to justice and increasing access, people's access to legal services and what kinds of policies might we be working on that can help with that. Through that process, one statutory change has come to fruition, to mind that I think would be really helpful. There is a prohibition on really establishing formal partnerships or fee sharing between lawyer referral services and nonprofits, or you know, really any other entity that is not a certified legal service organization. So we're looking at getting rid of that restriction and trying to come up with new and creative ways to establish these partnerships. So that's one, one piece of it. We're still working out language and still talking with stakeholders on that. The second piece has, has to do with the fees. So there is a statutory cap on certification fees that have been in place since 1994. And that's something that the state auditor has pointed out to us. And I know that's something that this board is very focused on is making sure that our programs are financially solvent. So that is going to require an adjustment to that statutory cap. So those are the two items there on LRS.
And then sort of our fourth prong of categorization for the affirmative proposals was access to justice. And the one Bridget just talked about sort of crosses, crosses over both the last one and this one. What we have identified here is continuing the earmark of the $5 voluntary contribution to summer, summer law fellowships. As part of the licensing fee bill, as our lawyer members certainly are well aware, there is a $45 opt out, a voluntary contribution, opt in, a voluntary contribution for legal services programs. $5 of that $45, a couple of years ago, got earmarked to provide summer law fellowships. Otherwise, all of that money gets distributed pursuant to formula. And with, with the formula funding, small programs in small counties would get very little money. But by creating a, an earmark and a competitive grant program, we're able to fund quite a number of fellowships for, for law students. This all came out of the recruitment and retention studies that looked at public interest drift and the fact that we need to get, get to law students who have an interest in doing public interest. We need to get them into legal aid organizations, get them paid in order to keep them there and keep their interest. If they, they often find themselves needing to go to the private sector where they would get paid for a summer program. And so this is a way to keep their, their interest and keep them in, in public interest. When we saw the earmark the first time and it was a board affirmative proposal then, we had agreement with the Legal Aid Association of California, the Access to Justice Commission, and California Change Lawyers, that we all thought that this was, that this was a really appropriate thing to do, this earmark. And I, and as the sunset date is approaching, right, this is, this earmark would, is going to, is scheduled to end at the end of 2024, we have reached out to all of the partners and I'm happy to report we are again all in agreement that we should continue this sunset date for an additional five years. And so we're seeking the board's support for that as well as an affirmative legislative proposal. And finally, there are a couple of technical amendments that are needed that are spelled out in the agenda item because they are entirely technical and nonsubstantive. We're not going to take your time and go through those today. If you have any questions, we are of course happy to answer them about those technical items or anything else.
Thank you, and it's been a pleasure working with legislative liaisons, with staff to really flush out this list and really appreciate staff and their organization of, of all of the things that affect this organization and all that we do. Certainly, we have many, many things that could be before us, but I really appreciate the prioritization as presented today. Are there any questions or comments? Yes, Trustee Trejo.
Thank you so much for all your work. Thank you. It's very comprehensive. I was just curious, and this is just one point, as a, as a business owner, whenever you start messing with my receivables, I get a little freaked out, right? And so I was just curious, because if, if you're prolonging the process in collectibles, would that, would that not then affect your, your cash flow? And is that a concern or not? I was just, that's my issue.
On the, are you talking about the lawyer referral service?
I'm talking about just collections of fees primarily, which I know are a big source of our top line revenue.
Yes. I, I, that's a good question. I think there's some things to work out, but my understanding is it really is, I think we would maintain the, the bulk of people coming in at the same time and then just giving us, whether it's like setting a separate deadline or whether it's giving us the discretion to give extensions to certain people just in case. But it's, it, the fact that we're set right now statutorily without being able to move at all is what we're trying to work through. But that's a good point, and I think we just have to work through what the language would be for that flexibility.
Because typically, I know, like for, for me, accounts receivables departments are usually, they bring about an acrimonious relationship with licensees or with their, with their folks. I'd, I'd like to try to avoid that and certainly try to avoid any cash flow problems that we might have and certainly just, I wanted to bring those up.
Thank you.
Donna, Bridget, thanks for the presentation. Just two, two things real quick. One is our action today would mean that we would go forth and seek the legislature, including all this in the, in the fee bill, correct?
Yes.
So not only just the increase in the fee, but all, all these different policy and technical sort of amendments. So that's one.
Yeah, either in the fee bill or there's certainly a possibility for at least one of the items to be in a standalone bill.
Okay. And then the second question is probably a little, little in the weeds, but the, the $5 opt in for the, the legal services fellowships, I'm just going to presume not every legal aid entity would get a fellow. So how does, how does, how does the program actually work? I, for some reason, this one slipped my, slipped me.
Yeah. So it's a, it's a competitive grant, grant proposal. Proposals are submitted to the Legal Services Trust Fund Commission, and they have a rubric and they go through to, to select the programs that would get the funding for these fellowships. There were some numbers in the agenda item. I think it's, if memory serves, last year they were able to fund 76, I believe, fellows with the money that came just from that $5 earmark. And so, but it is a competitive, a competitive grant program. It's a follow on, essentially this, this $5 was initially earmarked for legal services organizations to hire provisionally, provisional licensees. And then, and that was a two-year period. And once that period ended, they converted it to this earmark for, for summer, summer fellows as opposed to just folding the $5 into the, the total $45 amount. But it is a very organized process through the Legal Services Trust Fund Commission and our staff in the Office of Access and Inclusion.
I like the proposal before us, and I really appreciate your work for it. Refresh my memory as to the timing of when the board will be discussing and reviewing the specificity as to how much the rate, fee increase we're going to request and what the line items and amounts. I, I'm presuming we're not doing that today unless I'm wrong, but just help me out in terms of timing.
Absolutely. So in the first part of the planning session, which will take place right after this, we'll be talking at a high level about the fee increase and we'll be talking about getting your, your thoughts and brainstorming about some key policy questions. The plan is that we would come back in March with the dollar amount for your consideration. And that would obviously also have to be included in the report that goes to the legislature April 1, which is really why you'd need to sign off on that in the, at the March meeting.
Perfect. I'll move it.
Aye.
Buenaventura.
Aye.
Chen.
Aye.
Cisneros.
Aye.
Good.
Aye.
Huser. Shelby. Not present. Stevens, not present. Soell.
Aye.
Tony.
Aye.
Trejo.
Aye.
Stallings.
Aye.
10 ayes, zero nays, motion carries.
All right. Thank you guys so much for giving us great direction. Appreciate it. All right. We're going to take a 15-minute break. We'll return at 2:50. Go ahead. All right, welcome back. We are on item 707.1. This is April Legislative Reports. This is pursuant to Business and Professionals Code, Section 6086.20 and 6145.1. This item is being presented by Executive Director Leah Wilson, our Chief of Programs, Donna Herschkowitz, and Chief Financial Officer Araceli Montoya Chico. So, or Chico, sorry. Welcome, Araceli and Leah and Donna.
All right. Is Araceli here? Okay. I'll just kick, kick it off and then send things over to Donna. So we have kind of three distinct discussion topics for this planning session over today and tomorrow, and then some training mixed in. So we're starting off with what I think is probably the most important, which is the fee increase request and what we colloquially call the April Reports. Donna is going to walk you through slides that we've created and posted that relate to those reports and provide you with some background that I think will be useful as we then transition to a discussion of the fee increase request and really what we see as the two components of the request. Araceli will also participate in that conversation by walking the board through the preliminary numbers for the 2024 and 2025 budget, and will be explaining how that translates to the fee increase request. So with that, I'm going to turn things over to Donna and Araceli.
Thank you. If we can have the PowerPoint posted. Leah just took us through the agenda, so we're going to jump ahead and start on slide three. So as we just discussed moments ago, securing a needed fee increase is going to be the bar's number one legislative priority. So we wanted to take some time today to develop with you some parameters of what that might look like. The legislature provided us a roadmap of what we need to do to effectively demonstrate the, the need that we have for a fee increase. We want to focus our time this afternoon thinking through and brainstorming together how we are going to follow that roadmap. What, what are the needs that we're going to put forward? How we should structure the fee to make it not out of the, out of reach for some and make it more palatable for those who have to vote, vote it into, into effect. So what is this roadmap that I'm referring, referring to? Many of you have heard us refer to, as Leah just did, sort of colloquially, April Reports. And this is a combination of three reports that we were directed by statute through last year's fee bill to submit to the legislature by April 1st of this year. The first of those three reports is the one that we're going to spend most of our time talking about today. And that's a justification, requires a justification for how we would use the revenue generated by a fee increase. So for those of you who are familiar with the state budgeting process, you may want to think of that like a BCP. It's a budget change proposal of sorts, you know, how we would generate, how we would justify how we would use the revenue generated. The requirements set forth for us to report on are in two parts. First, an explanation of the necessary fee increase simply to maintain our existing operations and our, and service levels. That's what we identify here as sustaining core operations. The second part is programs and activities that require additional support and the ways in which any additional funding would improve operations, would increase efficiency, and would improve service levels. So here, what we're referring to in the slide is expanding our impact. The second report that we have shown here on the slide under Discipline System Improvements is a progress report on case processing standards, specifically a discussion of the process changes and performance and operational efficiencies that have been implemented and how that has impacted case processing timelines in our Office of Chief Trial Counsel primarily. The report also needs to compare our performance against our proposed case processing standards, which we submitted to the legislature in 2022, I believe. So looking at, looking at our performance in comparison with those proposed, proposed case processing standards. So as part of that report, we're going to be including outcomes from a workload study that is being, that is going on, I think, right now, as a matter of fact, to determine the amount of additional staffing that we would need in the Office of Chief Trial Counsel in order to meet those recommended case processing standards. Ultimately, the information that we get from that workload study is going to feed back into our fee, our fee recommendation request. It'll be included as, as part of the request for how we can expand our impact, how we can improve our service levels and improve efficiencies. The third report, also listed on the slide, it, it requires us to report on recommendations for a formal diversion program for attorneys who committed minor violations of the rules of professional conduct. As you'll see, as we go further through these slides, this also actually ties back to our request for additional funding to support and improve our outcomes. What you see before you is, is what we submitted to the legislature back in June of 2023, following a discussion with this board. We had identified a need for funding that we divided up into two categories. One was core operating needs, which you'll see here required an increase of $77 per active licensee. You'll see it included things like meeting our obligations to our existing staff, addressing structural underfunding consistent with a finding by the state auditor last year that we did in fact need a fee increase because of that structural underfunding, and also the needs to pay lease costs after the sale of the San Francisco building, which we were anticipating at that time would happen, and we are happy it did in fact happen. And some other costs here laid out that made up the $77 that we reported to the legislature in June of 2023. So in August of last year, we came back to the legislature at their request when it seemed fairly apparent that there was not going to be a fee increase in the offering. We came back with a report identifying the minimum funding that was needed essentially to keep the lights on. You'll see that with that lens, we formulated the request a little bit differently from what we had submitted in June. And we identified an $82 need, $82 per active licensee for sustaining core operations, for keeping the lights on. And that was in order to address what was at that time, and you'll hear later from Araceli, still remains, essentially a projected deficit of $17 million for 2024. What you see on this slide is a crosswalk that we presented to the legislature to be transparent and show how time and looking at the fee needs under this new lens impacted the assessment of our funding need. Among other things, we took out requests that were more related to growth and improving service levels than keeping the lights on. The original $77 included, for example, funding, very important but not part of, part of our core operating needs to reduce the backlog in the complaint review unit. That's just one example. Also, we added what is typically, I would probably say, and Araceli, I'm sure would correct me, but typically a paper liability. But given our financial position represented a real risk that we needed, needed to account for, and that was the liability of PTO and leave accruals that, that we had on the books. But ultimately, our request needs to be driven by the bar's financial condition. And so what I'd like to do before we talk about what the request is that we should be considering for this legislative year for the 2025 fee, I'd like to do is turn it over to our Chief Financial Officer, Araceli Montoya Chico, so she can take a few minutes to provide us an update on the financial condition to help us set the stage for, for the rest of the afternoon's discussion.
Thank you, Donna. So I wanted to share with the, everybody here at the board, our 2024 budget that we, we're still fine tuning, but we're just, just about done with it. So our 2024 budget is the baseline for what becomes our 2025 projection, and our 2025 projection, those numbers is what we are going to use to determine what our fee increase need is. So those in the finance committee that we had, we had a finance committee last week already saw these numbers, but I want to highlight where revenues and expenses are for our 2024 budget. And as you can see in this slide, it's, I'm doing the comparison to the August 2023 projection that Donna had just shared in the prior slide, which is what, you know, we told the legislature we would have a, roughly a $17 million deficit at the end of, for 2024, excuse me. So really quick, on the revenue side, our budget is actually up 90, it's $97 million, up $3 million from that projection, and that's really driven by two main factors on the revenue side. And you see them bullet, the two bullet points here. The first one, we had to move, or we moved some The first one, we had to move, or we moved some work from the Legal Specialization Fund into the Office of Regulation. And the Office of Regulation sits in the general fund, so we had to move that revenue accordingly. The second point here is our investment income. Our investments have been earning higher rates than we anticipated. So we've gotten a lot more earnings out of those investments, and that's, which has helped us a lot. And as you can see, we've, we've earned, you know, and it's very, very in line with what, it's very in line with what we are earning in 2023. So we definitely expect to get more investment earning that helps increase our revenues. On the expenses, we are at about $119 million, which is $8 million higher than the August projection. And that's, I'm going to break it up into two categories. Those that I'm saying are ongoing cost increases, and those that are one-time costs that are built into the budget. In the following slide, I'll go in through the one-time costs. But for now, our ongoing cost increases that we do expect to keep incurring in future years are highlighted here, and the first one, of course, is personnel costs. We did add four new positions in the 2024 budget. That, in addition to increased healthcare rates that, you know, anticipated, had a pretty significant increase, that has cost our personnel projection to go up by just over $2 million from what we had projected back in August. Also, we sold the building in November. The August projection assumed that we would continue to own the building. But now that we sold it, our first year of lease payments is net about $3.2 million, just over $3 million higher. So of course, we have to account for that lease payment. And just our IT-related expenses have continued to increase by the amount in here. And I do want to highlight that our 2024 budget assumes that we are deferring this OPIP contribution payment that we normally have done annually. And it's about $2.8 million. So if we, if we did not defer, we would need to be adding back $2.8 million into our 2024 budget. So that basically leaves us in 2024 with an expected deficit of about $22 million, which is $5 million more from the $17 million projection we gave the legislature. Most of that, however, is accounted by these one-time expenses or one-time investments that we have in our 2024 budget. This is the first portion. They total about seven, just over $7 million of one-time investments that are not going to be going forward. And I won't go through every single one, but they are going to be listed here in the following slide. The first, the digitalization project and office restock is something we have to do. We're going to, you know, decrease our footprint of San Francisco office. So we have to, we have to move a lot of the hard, we have a lot of hard paper in the office. So we need to turn all of that into digital files, as well as restock our floors. The elevator in Los Angeles has been breaking down on and off for a long time now. So we definitely need to invest in upgrading the elevator. We're also doing some security improvements to the website. We're doing an update, a five-year update on the Racial Spirit Study. Thank you. As well as the California Just Gap Study. We need to upgrade our phone system as well, so the dollar amounts are associated there. The Agaton litigation, I think it's been discussed several times with the full board. It is possible the lawsuit will be dismissed this year, so, you know, but we do still need to incur, we are anticipating to incur outside legal counsel costs one time, at least in 2024. And then this last, this last item here, the 2024 lease cost, right now, we have the same floors as we did when we owned the building. But after 2024, or starting in 2025, we are going to have less floors. So our lease payments are actually going to come down by $1 million. So I'm calling that a one-time, one-time expense, if you will, in 2024, as we should be paying $1 million less in lease payments come 2025. So as I mentioned, our 2024 budget is the baseline to create our 2025 projection and determine what our fee increase need is. So what I did was, I took our 2024 budget, that $22 million deficit, and I've adjusted it by taking out all of these one-time expenses. So roughly the $7 million that I've mentioned in the previous slides. There was no need to adjust revenue for 2024. So this 2024 adjusted budget is what it would look like if we didn't have these one-time investments. So that deficit of $17.6 million is pretty close with the $17 million that we had told the legislature in August. Now to come up with a 2025 projection, which is, it's our first pass, it's very high level. But on the revenue side, we have increased the revenue for our projected increase in licensee growth. We've also accounted for the increases that we would need in the mandatory fee arbitration and lawyer referral service fee programs. So that bumped up our revenue a little bit. On the expenses, we increased also personal costs by about 5%. And that's because we know we're going to have to do merit increases in the last year of our COLA. So we have to account for those. All the other expense categories outside of personnel, we have increased them by 2.6%. And that's the most recent CPI, it's indexed, or it's marked to the CPI index as of December for the San Francisco Bay Area. So we added 2.6% across all the other expense categories. And we now have a deficit, a projected deficit for 2025 of $22 million. If I convert that to what it would be for a fee increase, it's $103 per active licensee fee. And here is just comparing to what we had initially presented to the legislature, 77 in June, $82 in August. And as of our first pass at the 2025 projection, it's 103 based off of that $22 million deficit to just support core, core operations.
So recall that core operations, or sustaining core operations and maintaining our existing operations and service levels was part of the fee request. As Araceli pointed out, looking at those core operations in order to sustain that, based on the 2025 budget, we are looking at a need potentially for a $103 increase for every active attorney. For those core operations, as I went over earlier, we had some different numbers that we had originally presented based on the financial condition and what we were looking at previously, earlier presenting the $77 number, and then revising that, as we just recently discussed, to $82 in the, what we presented in August. But in June, we also presented, and this is a number that I think a lot of you probably have going through your head. I remember a $107 figure. Well, in June, we also presented, on top of the $77 request for core operations, sustaining our current levels, we had some recommendations to, to talk about growth and looking at improving programs and services, and not simply sustaining them. And so there was a $30 request that was incorporated as well, that looking at, looked at funding new permanent positions in the Office of Chief Trial Counsel to handle complaints about activity going on in client trust accounts, implementing compliance reviews and audits of client trust accounts, part of our Client Trust Account Protection Program, establishing a diversion program for low-level violations, integrating the state bar into the state budget, and establishing an inspector general for the discipline system. So this is what was identified in June as expanding, expanding impact on top of the prior discussed core operations. So what is it that we are recommending that we look at now? And we're not going to put dollar figures in front of you at the moment, but looking at essentially a crosswork, crosswalk from what we presented last June and August, and what we're, what we're learning now and thinking about now in terms of expanding our impact, and where it is that we need to, we need additional support for programs and services to increase and improve our operations. So we are recommending that we remove from the request that you just looked at, on the last screen, the positions for the Client Trust Accounting Team in the Office of Chief Trial Counsel, sort of. We are, we wouldn't include that as a standalone, but that would be part of the, the assessment of the case process, when we do the workload study of the needs in the Office of Chief Trial Counsel in order to meet the case processing standards. That would include a standalone team to process the Client Trust Account cases. So that would exist in a separate part of the request, but we'd be taking that out from what we presented in June. Removing the request for inclusion in the state budget. As you see, that's not something that's currently on the table. We've had that discussion with legislative staff, and so take that out at this time. Removing the request for an inspector general, as that also is not something that is currently on the table. Now, we would be keeping, from the slide that you had just looked at, keeping the request for funding to implement the audits and the reviews of the Client Trust Accounts, those compliance reviews and audits, and also funding to establish a diversion program. So those things would be carried over. We had also identified, as I mentioned previously, and we had lumped these into the core operations request in, that we initially did in June, previously identified areas for additional investment that really do form more of the, of the components of expanding our impact. And that is providing funding for our diversity, equity, and inclusion work, which is part of our core mission, and not something that has sufficient funding. It's currently funded by a $2 opt-out for, in the licensing fees. And we know that, last I had looked at the numbers, it was about 60% only of the, of the licensees who, who paid that, who paid that funding. And it isn't sufficient for the many things that we want to accomplish. Funding to, to support additional positions, to reduce the significant backlog in our complaint review unit, which for our newer trustees is a unit within the Office of General Counsel that handles requests for a second look when the Office of Chief Trial Counsel makes a decision to close a complaint of, about professional misconduct of an attorney. And then also, as we talked about earlier, and Leah mentioned, we have a question mark here on the Jenny Commission, and whether we should be including in a funding request, funding to support not just the change to the Jenny Commission that was made a couple of years ago that we supported continuing through the earlier item, but also, this is, as we've talked about in the past, an unfunded mandate. And should we be including a request for fully funding the Jenny Commission as part of the additional areas for investment? What else? What, what else is it that we should fund? So what we've looked at now, or what we've asked for in the past, and if we're continuing to request those things. But we also realized that we needed to take a hard look at the bar and determine what additional funding needs there were in order to really put together the proper request. And so one of the first things that we did to help understand this and to be as inclusive as possible as we came to you with our thoughts for what we might do, was to reach out to our staff and ask staff for their thoughts on where additional funding might be needed. Alfredo, is there a way that you can click on the "See What They Said"? So we engaged our staff in what's called a thought exchange, which is a feedback tool that we launched to ask them to share their ideas. So it asks everyone to share, share your ideas, and then rate the ideas that are shared by others. So we can see what gets mentioned a lot, and what is the most highly rated by our staff. And so in round one, we launched the thought exchange for all of our staff. And then, and in round two, we brought the results to our executive team and asked for their feedback on a particular question. So in round one, thank you, we asked staff, where do you think additional funding is needed to increase efficiency, improve outcomes, reduce workload, or provide better customer service? Really getting their input on this second prong of the fee increase request. Where do we need, need additional funding to expand our impact? And then also, as we are thinking about what this report to the legislature is going to look like, we wanted to hear from our staff what they think the legislature needs to know about us and our work in order to support the funding request. What makes us effective? What makes us impactful and valuable? We had, we had 101 staff participate in this thought exchange. 95 thoughts were presented, and there were 2,000 items that were rated. And the way this, the thought exchange works, everyone gets 20 or so thoughts to rate. Then you may get, I may get different ones to rate from my neighbor, but we're given an opportunity to rate as many thoughts as, as we can. I'm not going to go through this in great detail. This was included in the links to the, to the item. But I did want to just look, look at this. If you could slide Alfredo past the word cloud and to the, perfect. So just showing you that what our staff overwhelmingly thought was the most important was that we needed funding for information technology. Then next, the, the second highest rated was more staffing needed for the Office of Chief Trial Counsel, which, as we talked about, will form a different component of the fee request, dealing with the need to fully fund, fully be able to meet the case processing standards. But we thought this was really helpful to get this input from staff. And then just, just for, sort of, I encourage you to take a look at the slide that looks at the summary of, high-level summary of what some of the thoughts were that were provided by staff in their length, their own, in an AI-generated summary of what it is that the staff told us. But I think it just gives you a little bit of insight. And if you could scroll to the, not the next slide, but the one after. Thank you. Just again, a couple of key thoughts that we heard from staff, and this is, in their words, on why IT needed to be funded, funded, why there was an additional, why there was a need for additional funding, and an extraordinary need for additional funding for information technology services at the state bar. I'm not going to go through those, but I just wanted to highlight that. And then just for, just to sort of show you some of the things that we heard from staff in the next word cloud, where we asked them, what are the things that the legislature should know about us? What makes us valuable? What makes us effective? What, what, why should they support a funding increase? As, if you're familiar with word clouds, the words that are, that are largest in this instance are the words that were, that were rated the most highly by, by our staff. And so, so just, you know, looking at, at sort of what we heard staff saying, you know, about our public protection and our commitment and our accountability, and sort of the critical work that we do. Next slide. And again, just a couple of thoughts with the AI summary, again, of this particular issue, where the staff were pointing out that the state bar's unique role in holding attorneys accountable and ensuring the legal, ensuring fair legal practice, that that is something that we really need to demonstrate to the legislature. Our dedication to public protection, regulation of attorneys, commitment to high ethical standards is something that we uniquely perform and is, is what makes us impactful. Finally, just to sort of show you what we did with our executive team, we said, since the IT, information technology came out as the most highly rated, we asked their input on how you'd break that down. What are the needs that you think that we have in information technology? And you'll see in this slide just some examples of what was the most highly rated themes that were identified by our staff. So returning to our prior PowerPoint. Thank you. It's exactly where I wanted you to be. So as you see, what are the additional areas for, for new investment in order to improve our outcomes and improve our service? Information technology showing up as the number-one priority for state bar staff. We have inadequate infrastructure, security, data governance, project management, and delivery, application support tools. There are really a whole variety of things that need to be improved, invested in, in information technology as the backbone of what we, most of everything that we do. We need to have an investment in information technology to do all of our other jobs better. Also, as we talked about, OCTC staff to implement case processing standards, which will be included, which will include staffing for a dedicated Client Trust Accounting Team. And also, the, an attorney representation pilot. Those of you who had, who were around for, or heard us talk about the study that we looked at and the disparities in the discipline system, one of the findings of that report was that the reason that there was, that there were disparities, the reason that African-American attorneys disparities, the reason that that African American attorneys were disciplined more frequently and more severely than their white attorney counter white male counterparts was because they were less likely to be represented in the discipline system. And so we had proposed, subsequent to that study, as part of one of our biennial reports to the legislature on diversity, equity, and inclusion, and then subsequently through our ad hoc commission on the discipline system, launching a pilot project to provide representation for 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 attorneys in our discipline system. And so that's something that we think is important to request additional funding for. So what I want to do now is tee up for some specific issues that we really need to delve into, key policy questions. I think what probably will make the most sense is for me to go over each of these three areas and then open up the floor for discussion of all of them, because I anticipate the responses overlapping and the issues overlapping to these three questions. So the first question really is looking at how closely should we hew to the requests that we put forward in 2023? Recall, first, we requested $107 between the core operating needs or sustaining our existing service levels and expanding our impact. That was modified when we were looking at simply keeping the lights on to $82. You know, what? So again, sort of, is is that what we should strive to to stick to, what we had put forward in the past? Is there a limit to how far we should be comfortable diverging from what we had requested in the past? Is it something that really should just be driven 100% by our examination of our current fiscal condition and what the budget needs? The second area for policy area for question for delving into is accounting for future growth. One of the things that we've been thinking a lot about is that when we put forward these requests to the legislature, we are asked, tell us what you need in 2025. Tell us what your what your 2025 budget is going to look like. Well, what we know is that every year, our personnel costs increase by X percent. Every year, our operating expenditures and equipment costs increase by X percent. We have there are there are a variety of of cost changes that we know that are going to happen. So should we be requesting what we need just for 2025? Or should we be looking at looking three years out or five years out and asking for for increases that take into account the the known growth that that we we absolutely expect to happen? And then finally, the question is the structure of our fee increase. Obviously, what we're what we expect we'll be looking at is a pretty significant fee increase. Looking at Aricelli's number based on the the current projection of what we would need in order to to sustain our existing operations of $103, these very important things that we had identified as additional where we're recommending additional support, we're looking at a significant fee increase. And so it made us think about, is it time to revisit how the fee how the fee is structured currently? Virtually, everybody has assessed the same fee. We do have a process for for scaling the fee. So you would have a 25% reduction if your income is below $60,000 in a 50% reduction, I believe, if your income is below $20,000. But other than that, everyone, everyone pays the same fee. There are other options. There could we could base it on income. We could base it on years in practice. We could base it on assessing fees to to law firms, because there is work that we do that where we use the law firm as sort of the entity that's that's that we're engaging with. We did look back, and in the late 90s, and I didn't look when it started, but certainly in the late 90s, the state bar fees were based on years in practice. And so it was a it was a very tight range, but people who were who were members of the state bar, and at that point, it was members of the state bar, for three years or more, paid the highest fee. If you were licensed between one and three years, you paid less than that. And if you were licensed for less than one year, you paid less than that. So there is precedent for this kind of structure. We don't know that years in practice makes the most sense, but it's something to consider. Again, years in practice, income levels, assessing fees on firms. I think there are a variety of other options that we would be interested in hearing from the board in terms of if you are interested in pursuing an alternative fee structure and recommending to the legislature an alternative fee structure, things that that you think we might want to explore in coming up with a recommendation that we would ultimately bring back to you in March. So that's it for me. And this is where I really would like we'd like to turn it over to you to get your input on these key policy questions, as well as if you've got any reaction to some of the items that we were talking about for where we might expand our impact by asking for additional fee increases.
All right. A lot to discuss here. Who who wants to kick it off? All right. Trustee Sowell, brave man.
Donna, you know, thank you for the for this presentation. And obviously, we had some of this discussion at the Finance Committee and some of this discussion yesterday. Was it the with the let's staff a little bit? Yes, trying to get my days days together. I think right off the bat, I'm just going to reserve the right to come back because I have a couple. I have I do have a couple of foundational questions that I want to I want to ask. And one of the foundational questions I want to ask is is just sort of a refresher for me is, Donna, we have we there's a fee that we charge active licensees as well as non-active licenses. And I know the bulk of our revenue comes from the active licensees, but just wondering how the non-active licensee revenue stream interacts with the the fee recommendations?
So I think for ease, more than anything else, when we are sort of talking about this at a high level, we talk about the fee that would the fee increase that we would need for the active licensees. What what's interesting is the way that the and so I'm sorry. So the the streams of the fees would be the same. So the active, the inactive licensees, for there are certain things that they pay the same amount for. There are other things that they pay a lesser amount for. So for example, you know, part of the licensing fee that all attorneys pay is the active attorneys pay $10 to support the lawyer assistance program. Inactive attorneys pay $5. Both active and inactive, I believe, pay $40 to support the client security fund. So there but the the stream of where those funds would go would follow the same the same path. The legislature in asking us to report on specifically what fee increases we would need identified a ratio of, I think they said, for every $25 active licensee fee increase, there would be a concomitant $6.25 inactive. So that was the essential math that they had done, looking at our current licensing fees. We what we presented to you, we sort of rolled up and said, this is the equivalent of the dollar amount we need. And we we would just sort of rejigger the math to figure out sort of what does that mean for active versus inactive?
The thing I want to add, if I if I could, is that there is a different sort of analysis that we need to undertake. And luckily, staff has already been working on this, just sort of what I would call like the macroeconomic analysis. And the big picture that we need to provide is the context for this fee increase request, which is the proportion of our licensee base that is active versus inactive. And we have a report that will be coming out in February, but I will just tell you. What it says is, in 2023, the inactive attorney population reached an all time high. We now have 71,000 inactive members, 197,000 active. And while the number of active attorneys increased by 8% over the last 10 years, the number of inactive attorneys has increased by 38%. That's the aging population that we have. And this is really important from a macro, again, like a macroeconomic perspective. The other piece is, if you're over 70 and inactive, you pay no fee. And that is a growing population within the inactive population. So these are really important things for us to consider.
So Leah and Donna, based on on that, and I'm just trying to remember how the how the math works here, is is there some net that because of the increase, because we we haven't factored in the inactives, so that the the 103 actually could be lower?
No. When Aricelli can speak to that, but she has a very cool little spreadsheet. So when when she plugs her numbers in, she gets an inactive fee and inactive fee, and it totals to the amount we need.
Uh huh.
So the 103, we need it. And then there's a corresponding inactive fee. And together, those give us the amount we need.
All right. Very good. Thank you for that. The other thing is, you know, over the over the last X number of years, we've been hit with all sorts of reports by the ledgers analysts and the state auditor, and and there have been recommendations in those reports for for, you know, what the structural deficit is and fee increases and those sorts of things like that. I'm not remembering that there is one of those that's on the horizon associated with the fee bill from last year. Is that correct?
That is that is correct. So we had we had the audit in 2023, that came out in 2023, that did recommend an increase. We are statutorily on a biennial audit schedule, and that the legislative staff in 2022 put in language that directed that that audit for 2023 focus on our our finances, because we had had conversations with them and told them we would be seeking a fee increase. So they wanted it to focus on what our financial condition was and whether a fee increase was justified. We were all pleased to see that the state auditor did recognize that our financial condition required a fee increase. And we'd had significant conversations with legislative staff and with the board about things that weren't included in the in the state auditor's findings that explained why the number that we were identifying as our need was higher, including the fact that the state auditor didn't include costs for renting or owning our San Francisco building, because at the time, they didn't know, we didn't know, so they couldn't know which one we were going to end up doing, but there weren't costs for either option. So there so so their number was was understated. And but there is, because that was intended for this purpose of identifying that the fee increase, and there isn't a similar audit happening this year, and our reports that we're submitting to the legislature in April are really intended to help them piece together what the auditor said last year and what we're telling them this year in order to see if they agree with the justification for an increase.
Last question, and I'll I'll turn it over to others to to chime in on. But like I said, I want to reserve the right to have a go back here is, you know, obviously, we've been engaged in these conversations for for quite some time. The sale of the building does present, you know, a patchwork, so to speak, a patch to get us through 2024. From an overarching standpoint, we need to get the we need to get this right. And and I'm very, very interested in hearing from other voices on the on the board. And, you know, obviously, the Finance Committee has talked about this a couple of times, but from other voices on the board and on their perceptions of of the way to do this and what the, you know, what the the right amount should be. A lot of the questions that were posed by by Donna in the slide on in terms of some of those those policy questions. The one thing that I probably haven't chimed in on previously is that I do like this idea of maybe a three year or a five year window of what our expenses are going to be. The state budget, when you look at the state budget, they look at the the prior year, the current year, and the out year. And I think we should go beyond that and possibly look at it from a five year standpoint. And I'll just sort of leave it there and reserve the right to to come back.
All right. Anybody else? Yes, trustee Huza.
So I just was looking up from the individual's point of view, and this really goes to the last column of what you were saying is, should we consider a new structure? So I pay $500 a year to be an attorney. There's an additional $100 you pay if you want to contribute to the voluntary legal services program, which is essential to serve underrepresented populations in this state. And most attorneys, if they can, will contribute to that. There's another $100 already if you want to sign up to be in your area of specialty, which in my area, don't need that. But if you're in something like family law or whatever, that's an important thing to be in those subgroups. That's about $700 a year already. It's not a problem for somebody like me or, you know, some of the other trustees, where we hand over the bill to our firm, we hand over the bill to our company, they pay the bill, they're done. It is a problem if you're talking about a 25 year old with hundreds of thousands of dollars of law school debt, and you're asking them to come out of law school and pay 700 or 800 dollars a year. That is significant. So I am very much in favor. I'm I'm I would insist that we have a balanced budget, but I am very much in favor of considering different structures, because it is unreasonable to me that we charge somebody who is working in a public service job the same as we charge not you're not charging me, you're charging my company. It's a very different thing. And so I think it's very important that we look at that. Another area that I don't know, so this is a question. Many, many people on my team are members of the bar or somewhere else, and they now operate in California full time. They live here, they operate as registered in-house attorneys. They don't have to take the California bar. They don't have to be California attorneys. Are we charging all of those people any kind of fees for working in California? That's a huge population, and most of those people are also getting somebody else subsidizing those fees. So can we have a subcommittee and kind of look at kind of different structures? Because I think if you're charging somebody another $100 who's right out of school, I don't know how they make it. And I I don't know, you know, to your point, Leah, it may be the 70 year olds who are going inactive. It's a lot of other people as well. And they're going inactive because they can't afford to keep paying these fees, and they're kind of dropping out of law and going into something else. So I want to encourage us to think about a different fee structure that's much more equitable.
We'll say in response to your question, we do have these multi-jurisdictional practice fees. I think maybe what you're talking about would be a registered in-house counsel fee. The board did vote last year to raise that fee quite significantly. I don't remember the amount, Donna, or if you do. But but we did raise that fee quite a bit. So that is something that we tried to capture. That fee does it right to the admissions fund, not the state bar's general fund, which is what we're talking about now. But we did increase that fee quite a bit.
No, I don't I don't remember what the.
Good question.
Yeah, it's a very high fee, but I don't remember what what it is. So it is, we did increase it significantly. Interestingly, though, what we increased was the initial fee and not the renewals. And so that is something that we certainly can look at. The the reason that the reason to charge these registered in-house counsel and other special admittees is because they are subject to the discipline system. And they are subject to the California rules of professional conduct. They are subject, if they if they engage in professional misconduct, they are subject to having being investigated by the Office of Chief Trial Counsel. They are their clients can go reach into the client security fund. And so there are other other parts outside of admissions that are in fact that regulate them. And so and so that's. And so, and so that's certainly something that, that we can be exploring. I.
I think we are talking, Donna, though, the annual, the renewal fee does go to the general fund.
I think the renewal does.
The admissions fee goes, the, the initial registration fee goes to admissions, and that was raised quite significantly. The annual renewal does go to the general fund, and it matches the amount for, for any attorney in California. So if, if we do get a fee increase authorized through legislation, the annual renewal for registered in-house counsel would go up. But there could be an alternate proposal to this conversation where you say we want the registered in-house counsel annual renewal fee to go up beyond that, what the base attorney licensing fee is. So that's something we could pursue in line with this conversation.
I want to start off by saying how much I appreciate the clarity of this presentation and how early in the year we're doing this. This is very different from what we've done in the past, and I feel very responsive to questions and that trustees have brought up in the past. So I really, really appreciate it. The clarity of twenty twenty-four budget forms the basis for twenty twenty-five needs, right? Twenty twenty-four is the base. And I like to position the precision by which one-time costs are noted, are very clearly listed with the cost, and then taken out of the base of the twenty twenty-four to look for the twenty twenty-five budget, because that's a fair thing to do. We're not padding the budget, okay? And it's very, it has great transparency. What I would suggest, though, is I'm a little worried about the one-time deferral of the two-point-eight billion dollars for the pension contribution because that may artificially lower the twenty twenty-four and then the basis of twenty twenty-five. My understanding is that it's an important thing to do on a regular basis. And unless we are making a decision that we're okay with never making another, you know, OPEP contribution, I, I would suggest, and we have time to talk and think about this, but I'm going to put on the table for consideration that we add this back in to the twenty twenty-four budget so that it's very clear that we intend to have the pension contribution be an ongoing, be ongoing part of our core budget. So that's one consideration. And, and it is really based upon me reading so clearly that the twenty-five budget is based on the twenty-four budget. So that, that's one thing.
Mark, can I interrupt you really, really quick? Just, just to, to clarify, the twenty twenty-five projection does include it. We added that two-point, which is the estimate I have now, I did include it back, you know, with the assumption that we're going to continue it.
And I appreciate that you did, and you had explained that very clearly at the finance committee meeting. I will say that what it does is it makes the percentage of increase from twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five artificially higher because it's not in twenty twenty-four. You know what I'm trying to say? So part of what we're looking at is sticker shock, right? That's what, one of the things we're talking about. When we had the slide, the divergence, how much is too much? Is, I think this contributes to that. So just for consideration, we, we're, we're early in the process. I really liked the, very much, the sequencing of the questions about how much and, you know, what's it for and how to distribute it. I will say that when it has the divergence, how much is too much? I really think we should think of it as how much is enough? We should not be constrained and be afraid of somebody else thinking that it's too much. I want to make sure that we are asking for enough. I'm not worried about what nobody else thinks, they think it's too much. Our responsibility is to ask for enough. So that's just a framework. You know, I sometimes talk about scarcity versus abundance, a model of thinking. I want to know that we have enough. A couple of suggestions for context. And I had brought this up in the finance committee. I, I think it would be useful to have a chart that says what is, you know, how much, what was the percent of increase that the state bar has received in the last twenty years in terms of the fee increase? And what is the inflation cost rise in the last twenty years? We have to give people perspective. If they look at something and say, holy cow, you want to raise it by twenty-five percent in one year? You're crazy, okay? And I think we have to say, well, look at the context. The other thing, and this is something I've been real big on, and we've made so much progress in reviewing the fees that the state bar is in control of, the general fees. And those, many of those fees had not been reviewed for ten years or more. Well, that, that's our responsibility. And I feel much better now that we can say, as state bar, we have done our responsibility by looking at these other fees. And we should say and remind them how much some of these fees, some of these fees were increased by two hundred, five hundred percent, okay? So just to give perspective, I think as we do this, I think the more we show a big picture, the, the better off we're going to be. Those are my comments.
Well taken. Any other comments, direction? I think certainly just the observation I made about our annual licensing fees and how they relate to other states. I know that we're fairly low when compared to other states, especially in light of what, what we offer as, in, by way of being a licensing agency, having a state bar court, having dedicated prosecutors who specialize in this particular area of the law. In other states, there are general consumer protection attorneys who will litigate a wide variety of licensing issues. And so I think it's certainly important for the legislature to realize that I think the more experienced of a prosecutor we have, hopefully, the better work product we are going to turn out. And I think the point that I have tried to consistently make is that when you have financial stability from an organizational standpoint, then your employees have a lot more confidence in staying in one particular place and building up that, that wealth of knowledge that will ultimately benefit the organization and then ultimately benefit California. So I think certainly all of those will be communicated to, to the legislate, the individual legislators that we meet with and, you know, both, both the Senate and the Assembly. Regarding the amount of fee increase and the new fee structure, income-based fees, has this been used anywhere else in the United States or any other licensing agencies? Have they dipped their toes into this?
I don't know. I've asked the team to take a look at it. Certainly for attorney licensing entities in the country. I do believe there is one state that does a firm-based assessment. And I do know that we, as Donna mentioned, we have, in essence, we have that because we offer reductions, reduced fees based on income. But we will know soon sort of what the lay of the land looks for other states. I, I don't know how much of a landscape review we can do of other licensing agencies, although we can certainly do that for California licensing agencies. On that, I wanted to ask, Trustee Huza kind of mentioned a working group. Just in terms of thinking about next steps, I don't know if the board has other remarks to make. I would like the board to weigh in on this Jenny question because for us, our next step is to take the various items that you saw recommended, the modifications to the June twenty twenty-three request, the additions, et cetera. And we would build that out so you could start to see what this fee request would look like under this expanding our impact category. Given the timeline for that, we would probably want to bring something forward to the board to take a look at, at a specially scheduled meeting, what we're going to need to set for February to approve the budget to be submitted to the legislature. So at that time, we would want to bring you back something more developed on the expanding our impact piece. So I want to make sure that you're comfortable with the items we have there. Here a little bit more discussion about Jenny in particular. But then with respect to you coming up with the new fee structure, it would be helpful to work with a couple of board members in a way that doesn't, is informal, general counsel, so you could advise the number, to come up with some different ideas for the board to consider. And we could bring to that perhaps team information about what other states do, et cetera, and really work through some models for the board to take a look at. Let's see what our G C has to say.
Well, I think if it's comprised of three or, three or more board members, it would need to be a Bagley King type of a meeting at which it's discussed, but anything less than that, it could be a work group that's not subject to the Brown Act. I'm sorry, the Bagley King Act. Confused my open meetings load.
I mean, I'm looking at the newly appointed liaisons to the public-private partnerships. I think this might fall within your wheelhouse, if that's something that you have time to devote to. And we don't have to decide right now, but I think that's what immediately sprang to mind. And not to put you guys on the spot. Definitely. All right, any other comments? Yes, Trustee Barahona.
Thanks. I have many comments, but I'll try to keep it really brief. One is that I think, I think presenting the legislature with like the five-year plan is going to be really important. I think, Trustee Sewell mentioned this because I think that you're going to have increases in revenue year over year for the next many years. And, and, I'm sorry, increase in expenses. Let me switch that around. And you're going to, and we're going to have to increase revenue over time. I think we have to show the other side of the coin, the, the, the the fees in which the legislature approves, but also the resources we need to leverage from private funding. I think we, we have to show a balance of, you know, you're going to have less sticker shock. I know when you can present, there's other folks that may come to the table to provide some resource for one of these specific things, albeit restricted for a particular purpose. So I would say that. And then I think you have to do a different fee structure, somebody that's, you know, making seventy-five thousand dollars as a public interest lawyer versus somebody that's making seven hundred fifty thousand dollars paying a similar fee. You know, feels, feels, you know, doesn't feel, doesn't feel equitable to me. And I think really, I think echo Trustee Huza's comments there. I also think that in addition to private funding that could be pursued, again, restricted for particular purposes that support our work, we may want to consider other, other things like what would an investment project, I would project the expense for this and next year and probably the five years to come of really understanding the use of A I to expedite the backlog. What would that mean? How would we train our staff? Because that is going to be an anticipated expense we should be thinking about. So I would say, you know, thinking about that, I would also say perhaps leveraging pro bono support, which I know is, is, can be challenging considering all the conflict of interest issues. But that might be another sort of area to look at. Again, I'm trying to think about other creative solutions that perhaps are either in-kind and/or bring in new revenue. And I think that the last thing I'll say is, you know, can we leverage some of that investment income to do something else? Perhaps a future real estate project or something else that would gain, that over the long term would bring in more resources to the organization and put us in a better financial position. Again, just totally out there, but perhaps. And then the last is, you know, I don't know if there is a, any kind of fee-for-service sort of program we could implement where we're charging for, for a particular service. But I know that that also can be really, can also bring in revenues, something to think about. Again, I have probably seven more things to say, but I'll keep it at that. Thank you.
All right, Trustee Tony, and then Trustee Sewell.
I, I, I wanted to go back to the good idea of the working group that's going to be looking at fee structures. Can you remind me who you were recommending?
So it would be trustees Barahona and Treo.
Great, great. Do, are, are, I, I don't know because Trustee Barahona is new. Are you an attorney?
I am not an attorney.
The reason I'm bringing this up is I think it's important to have attorney representation of people who pay the fees and understand how it works. It's not me, I am not an attorney. And I was, I was thinking that since Trustee Huza had, had brought up this issue and, and seemed to share some thinking that she's been doing that it, it, it might be a good idea to make sure that there was at least one of the two members being a licensed attorney that is paying the fees and brings that perspective into it. That's just my suggestion here. Chair.
That's a point well taken, and I don't think we need to form the committee today. I'd rather talk with individual trustees offline just about their workload and whether they can handle those additional responsibilities. All right, Trustee Sewell, then Trustee Treo.
Can we talk a few minutes about the reserve policy? And so two things kind of come to mind. One is the proceeds of the, of the building sale net us twenty-nine million dollars. Our deficit, as Ariselli has projected it to be, is twenty-two million dollars. So that would leave us a general fund reserve of seven million dollars. And the, barring some other sort of, I may not be factoring in any other sort of carryover that we have. Ariselli, you'll, you'll correct me on all that. I wonder if, one, does that meet our current reserve policy? Because I know we haven't been meeting our reserve policy. But two, my, also my question is whether or not, because we, in the run-up to the building sale, had the ability, the legislature gave us the ability to, to draw down reserves in other funds that were exceeding the, our reserve policy. And I guess my overarching question is, you know, the reserve policy was built on, I think, something that the Supreme Court uses or the courts use. And I just wonder if that's still appropriate for, for the bar. You know, I, I feel like our reserve, our, our reserve percentage probably should be lower. I think it's seventeen percent is what it is that, that we're working off of. But I'd like to spend just a few minutes talking about the reserve policy.
So it is seventeen percent, aren't you? And no, even with, you know, if it's just, if it were to be the building proceeds of twenty-nine million, we have a twenty-two million dollar deficit. Even if we had, you know, I'm still working, we're still closing the book, so we're still trying to figure out what the ending twenty twenty-three general fund reserve balance is going to be. But even if that was, you know, two million dollars, you know, for maybe ten million dollars total, I'm just throwing out numbers there. Even if we had a ten million dollar general fund reserve at the end of twenty twenty-three, no, that's not seventeen percent, right? Seventeen percent is supposed to be about two, two months' worth of expenses. If I do a quick calculation, that's nineteen, twenty million is what the seventeen, the seventeen percent would be.
And I think, you know, you're the chair of the finance committee, so it's totally your prerogative to set an item on revisiting the reserve policy. I, I would say from my perspective, a two-month reserve is not that sizable of a reserve for an organization, particularly when we have no guarantee for annual adjustments to our licensing fee. our licensing fee. It's certainly been helpful to us for the last five years to have a reserve to use to sort of carry us. So that would be, you know, a consideration for the finance committee and ultimately the board, but happy to, to revisit that.
Leah, do you feel the same way? And I understand about the general fund, do you feel the same way about some of the other, the other funds that are subject to that same reserve policy?
I guess in general, I think it's a good idea because we are paying for staff out of all of those funds that I can think of. So it, it's helpful to make sure that you, you have a little cushion to, to know that you can pay staff. Now, some of those reserve balances are quite large, as you've seen, so maybe it is time to adjust or to be able to readjust the thresholds on a more flexible basis, based on a determination of what's actually in the reserve for those funds. But I do think generally it's appropriate to have a minimum floor. So if it's not two months, maybe it's one month. But I don't think you want to get much lower than that.
Agreed. I just, that's why I wanted to have this discussion, and maybe it would be appropriate for the finance committee to revisit this. Along those same lines, obviously up to you, Mr. Chair, you know, I wouldn't mind if the finance committee had a chance to take a whack at the, the discussion around, you know, what the appropriate sort of fee structure and, and what could be as well. Many of the, many of the members that you just mentioned are all on the finance committee, including Mr. Tony, Ms., trustee Barona, trustee Trejo, and trustee Hughes. So.
Yeah, no, that, that makes a lot of sense as well. I, I know oftentimes with scheduling meetings and having, you know, the more, the more attendees, the harder it is to schedule something, and I think this needs to be a fairly responsive item. So that's the only thing that I think that weighs against having the entire finance committee on this. But I think we can talk about that a little bit further. All right, trustee Sol, did you have anything else? All right, turn to trustee Trejo. Okay. All right, trustee Trejo.
Great, thank you, and thank you for your presentation, which is really comprehensive. I think if there was, if there's one way that I can encapsulate, one word that I would use to kind of encapsulate my time in the finance committee or understanding finances of the board, is that I'm bemused, right? Yeah, I, I, I come from a very kind of focused approach to investment and how I spend money, and certainly sometimes it's my money and sometimes it's my investors' money. So as a result, I take these things very personally, right? And so whenever someone comes to me and tells me that they have this great idea, yet their existing operation is in disarray, the last thing that I want to hear from them is anything about expansion or added costs or added anything, frankly. So my concern, it's not so much with the content of what you're saying, it's with the messaging. It's overwhelming. It can come off as wonky sometimes, right? And, and when you're trying to push through a very basic concept of increasing your revenue, you don't want to allow these, these rabbit holes to emerge. Because as you've seen here, we've fallen into these caverns all the way through, right? So I think that's, I think that's a real danger. I think that when we're going to a group of folks that up until this point have not necessarily been responsive to what we're trying to approach them about, in my mind's eye, as a private equity investor, I'm thinking, I should be hearing about cuts. I should be hearing about how you're streamlining, not about how you're expanding different departments and how you're taking on the other responsibilities. I'd be pissed. So I think that there's a real risk that if the messaging isn't done right here, certainly expanding it through a three, a three-year pro forma is essential in my view, because now you're going to be able to maneuver and see and give yourself some way. But I think that we have to be careful to not come off as tone deaf. That's a problem. And, and I think that, sure, I'll make myself available to help in any way, but I think if we're just focusing on what we need in our, that's not the way to do this. And that's, those are just my two cents.
Just a quick thought on that, and I appreciate trustee Trejo's comments. The only sort of counter I would, I would, I'd bring to your attention is that some of that workload is legislative workload due to things that they've, things that they're asking us to do, that they aren't paying, that they are, they have not given us money to pay for. And so that is just sort of, just sort of an interesting sort of conundrum, I think, that we find ourselves in, in dealing with, with the legislature.
Can I, can I respond? I think we should engage, right? And I know you have, and you've been very, you're very graceful in how you handle it, for sure. But as I'm thinking here, hearing this all over again, for once, I'm thinking, whoa, we just sold, we just sold a property and dude, we're back in this mess again. And that's a frustrating concept to me, just inherently. And just because in, in my world, what, you don't sell a property like that. When you do, it has to be meaningful. So here we are, right? And so for me, that's, that's my, my private equity frustration coming out of you, and that's not why we're here. I, I agree, it's just that I want to address it just as a basic, you know, supply and demand economist, if you will, hey, what have you done to streamline this? What, you know, all I hear is expansion to what sounds like an operation that's in distress. All right, that's kind of it.
I, I guess I, I would say, one, the fee bill language, which is linked to in the presentation, it does ask us to link some of our requested investments to efficiency improvements, and I would like to go to trustee, can you tell me, I'm tripping over your last name, Barah, Barahona?
Barahona.
Barahona. To your comment about A I, and if you have time to look carefully into what our staff said, they talked exactly about that. But the reality is, and we know this firsthand from what we're trying to do right now, is we need investment to become more efficient. We don't even have a basic document management system, and it turns out, you can't really get to A I until you have a document management system. So I agree with you that there are efficiencies to be had, and I've certainly been talking to my team about what is the long game for the bar? It is not needing to continually increase our headcount. It is becoming more efficient and self-sustaining within the fee that is established, to be able to comfortably go, if needed, five, 10 years without any increase. But we need to make some investment to get there. So I agree with you, we don't want to be tone deaf, but we also have to be realistic. We've been pretty starved as an agency. You mentioned, or somebody mentioned, trustee Tony, what our fee would be if it had just kept up with inflation. I believe that, and that number is well over $600, almost $700 compared to our actual fee, the comparable fee to what I'm talking to, it's $400. So we are nearly, you know, almost half of what we should be had we just kept up with inflation. So it's hard to be in that situation and start talking about the cuts we need to make. But I do agree that we can become more efficient, and that needs to be part of our messaging. So I think there, you know, I hear you, that resonates, and we need to be front and center with that when we talk about these additional investments.
That's not, I'm not really arguing that necessarily, I just, I think that there has to be, this is, this is a series of decisions over the course of many years that have brought us to this point. I just think that when you have 10 or 15 minutes to present to a legislative person, right, the last thing you want to do is come out of that in a necromonious situation, right? That's all I was saying, really, that I think that at the end of the day, there is some basic economics that doesn't really make sense here, some basic finance that doesn't make sense. And so to address that, I think is important.
Leah, I know you wanted to talk more about the Jenny piece. Is this a, the scope in which you want to discuss Jenny, is this efficiencies, is this, should it be housed elsewhere, or the?
No, basically, do we want to, do you want to include it in the fee increase request? And including it, there's two ways you could include it. In the, I think it was the June iteration of our fee increase request, we talked about the incremental growth needed to fund 100% in-person interviews, I believe, and the sort of full complement of hotel nights and things that the Jenny Commission wants to operate. So that was about $250,000, if I recall, that we asked for. Is that right, Donna? $1 per licensee. That would be one option, just incremental funding. Another option would be the full base amount of funding and of staffing the Jenny Commission. That is about a $1 million ask or 1.2 million, depending on what we include in it. So that's what I am looking for direction on, because each of those items is a component of the fee increase request. And so that's really the board's call. Again, we were going to mock something up for you to review at your, your next meeting, and really the question is, should we include that and what should it look like?
Any direction or comments? I'll do trustee Barahona and then trustee Hughes.
I, I would say you have to include the full cost of doing business, and that means you're, you're providing the comprehensive headcount and everything it takes to, for Jenny. Like, I, I think, you know, if you're not showing your full cost, folks are not also understanding that we're absorbing that full cost. So that, that would be my recommendation.
Trustee Hughes.
Yeah, my comment is, is very similar to that, is I think you've got to show each of the incremental costs, and, you know, some will get funded, some won't. I mean, it's not just whether the Jenny Commission will get funded at a whole amount or whatever. They, you know, whoever's approving this may decide not to fund the pension plan, or, you know, there's many different choices. But I also want to say how much I agree with the cost issue as well. We don't, at least I haven't heard anything about how we could cut costs, and, you know, that's something that should be on the table as well, as painful as it is, you know, and I think it will be expected.
Anybody else have any insight or direction? Donna, was there any other, were there any other items that you wanted further discussion on, or?
So I, so I think we have heard from a couple of trustees in their answers about the sort of question of, or at least from, from Mr. Tony in particular, about the question of how much do we want to hew to the prior, the prior asks? We've heard from a couple of trustees about accounting for future growth, and we have a plan going forward on looking at different fee, fee structures. Those were the key policy questions that, that we had presented. The other thing, in addition to the, the Jenny funding, we had the sort of list that we had talked about of, of if we are going to make a case for, for additional funding needs, we had identified the D E I funding, staffing the complaint review unit, and I T investment in order to make us more efficient and be able to support the work that, that we do. We did want to get sort of initial direction on if you were comfortable with those areas with us moving forward and, and working those up and developing that into a recommendation for you to take a look at.
Mr. Stallings, I can't hear you, I think your mic's off.
All right, trustee Good, my, my.
Yeah, on the D E I point, Donna, I think that's absolutely essential and imperative to our mission, and so as I'm sure you anticipated, I think it's super important that we work that up and include that as part of this. I would feel very uncomfortable not including it. And while I have you, I was wondering what, what's some of the detail and backup to that? What does that include?
So we had talked about this last year and the year before as well, and we had identified a proposal to fund what was included in the 2021, 2022 D E I legis, biennial plan that we submitted to the legislature as areas for growth. And I don't remember all of the items that were, that were included in there, I can break, I, I can find that out. As I said, we mentioned it in the legislative priorities item that we brought last year. What, what we had proposed at the time, right now, let me take a step back, currently, the, the fee that, that is charged is an opt-out, and it's $2 opt-out. What we had proposed, and the board had given us approval to move forward on in the past couple of years, was changing that to an opt-in. So 100% of attorneys would pay it as opposed to 62% or so, and also increasing that $2 by, I believe, $2 for active attorneys and $1 for inactive attorneys, in order to fund the, to fund the, the proposals and the recommendations that the board had approved in the 2021, 2022 biennial D E I diversity plan.
Trustee Good, any follow-up on that? All right.
No, I don't think so. I mean, I'd just love to see what the workup looks like so that we can kind of evaluate it. I think one of the other items might have been this potential pilot project of providing attorneys to folks in the disciplinary system, which we've talked about before, that was a really key component that our experts identified to reducing racial disparities in the attorney disciplinary process. You know, and I would love for us to see that pilot funded, and I think it's a very modest pilot, not a lot of money. But I personally would like to at least look at that and see what it looks like, since it's key to, to that work, which is, which the bar has spent a lot of time and money on, which we're going to have another racial disparity report, you know, done soon. So if there's a way to get that done, that's great. If in the final analysis, we think we can't include it, you know, it's another thing, but I'd love to see the markup of it. Thanks.
Yeah, point well taken, and I think the, the only heartburn that I have is continuing to put forth unfunded liability, or unfunded mandates, rather, and this, I think this really factors into like a multi-year fee bill or some sort of assurance that funding, funding specific to that program will continue. I see it as a tremendous opportunity to advance some of those, the ideas in the disparities report, but it could be a significant cost if, if not given the assurance from those who set our fees that, yes, you can continue this program. So that's kind of my only heartburn. Yes, trustee Chin.
I think we should embrace the language of S B, I mean, am I right in looking at S B 40 as the relevant?
Yes.
Bill? I mean, there's language in there that says, "It is the intent of the legislature that the state bar maintain its commitment to and support of effective policies and activities to enhance access fairness and diversity in the legal profession and the elimination of bias in the practice of law." So to me, that program, that pilot program fits squarely in that, and we should embrace it as one of the measures and activities we are doing to fulfill effectively this directive from the legislature that we maintain our commitment. So I am fully supportive of what trustee Good said. I think we have to include, I mean, we've been given this mandate effectively in the bill addressing, you know, what we need to do to get a fee increase, and so we absolutely should include it. And the pilot program, I think we should not view it as something separate, it is part of our efforts to eliminate bias in the legal profession and enhance diversity in the profession.
Well taken. Yes, trustee Shelby.
And I would say, and to that end, I think this is a great opportunity to connect with some of those legislative caucuses. Like, this should be something that we sit down with the African-American caucus and the other caucuses of color to say, hey, you know, this is, this is where we can partner, and how do we come together, right? And so then that way, you have the power of the voice of the legislative body behind the importance of what they say is mandated in the bill.
Yes, trustee Barahona.
Yeah, and, and I would echo comments trustee Trejo made earlier around any streamlining, reductions, and increased effectiveness. But I also think the other side, it made me think about the potential risk and exposure we have if we don't improve our I T. There's probably, we could probably enumerate that a little bit and say. There's probably, we could probably enumerate that a little bit and say, you know, in other places that have not, that have these out-of-date systems, we're talking about X exposure and liability ranging from X to Y dollars, which then just perpetuates a deficit position versus doing this now, making the investment now and knowing full well that we're going to have to update these systems over time, right? You're not doing it one time. So I just think that if we could sort of talk about the exposure we have when we have a backlog that we have and we need additional personnel, for example. So I just, I wonder if that would be helpful to do as well. I think you sort of inspired that in me when you were thinking, when I was thinking about the other side of it. So, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? I think this has been a very effective and helpful session. Lots of great ideas here. I know it was coming towards the end of the day and it's like we had this little burst of energy. So the question is, Donna, do you, do you need anything else from this body today?
I think I, I think we have what we need. I am just the, I was just the voice of this today. There was a lot of staff effort that went into what you saw before you today and what you will see coming before you in February. So I think we have what we need in order to take the next steps.
Excellent. Thank you for, as trustee Tony said, the clear and concise way this was laid out. So looking forward to seeing what's next. Yes?
I just want to make a comment. I, and I know trustee Tony touched on this, but you know, oftentimes people, as a public member, oftentimes people don't understand the decisions that go into the direction and the things that we do. And I was really a strong advocate of being really clear around that 107 and remaining with the 107 and understanding that 107 is now 103. I mean, it changes for people who are not practicing. But I think having this discussion in a public session really demonstrates to our partners in the legislature, the thought, the effort, and the time and attention that both the board and the staff take in terms of what we need to be an effective organization and to provide the oversight, the accountability, and the transparency to be able to do what we need to do. And so I hope that our partners in the legislature have the opportunity to really hear the conversation that has transpired and the preparation as it relates to moving forward and all of our appointing authorities as well.
Amen. All right, the next question is, do we have enough energy to get through one last agenda item? General counsel says it'll probably take 20 to 25 minutes, which I think should bring us up to 5 o'clock. So unless there's any strong objection.
And if we get through this item, you don't need to come in at 8:30 tomorrow. You could come in at 10:00.
Man, I should have let out. All right. Good, hearing no objection. All right, let's go to item 707.2. This is a discussion on governance, conflicts of interest, and other reforms. It's being presented by executive director Leah Wilson and general counsel Elaine Dufian.
To get the deck together.
Okay. If anybody wants a quick refreshment break?
Great, thank you. And this is a presentation that Lee and I will present jointly. And this portion, it's not working though. I think, okay, all right. This portion of our discussion really focuses on some amazing work that the Ad-Hoc Committee on Oversight and Accountability Reforms did over a short period of time. The Ad-Hoc Committee on Oversight and Accountability Reform was established by the board on December 3rd in 2022. And their charge was to develop and recommend structural, operational, and other reforms to address and improve the oversight and accountability of the discipline system for the state bar and also to recommend actions in response to the findings in the report of the independent May investigation. For those of you that may not be familiar with that, but the bar engaged the law firm and an attorney, Aaron May, to conduct an investigation into the state bar's handling of the complaints against now disbarred attorney, Thomas Girardi. And that report was released by the organization in March of last year. There were approximately 30 reforms recommended and majority of them have been implemented. The ad hoc committee comprised of three members, trustee Sawell, who also served as the chair, trustees Chin, and trustees Shelby. As I mentioned, the majority of the recommendations have been implemented. And before I turn to the specific recommendations that were made by the ad hoc committee, I also wanted to point out that a number of reforms were on the way to increase oversight and improve the discipline system and foster a culture of integrity within the state bar. And some of the issues that were identified as very concerning in the May report had been already addressed under the leadership of George, who implemented robust conflicts of interest and gift directives within the office of chief trial counsel that would require conflicts checks for each cases. The 2022 policy under his leadership also clarified that the complaining witness's withdrawal of a complaint cannot be the sole basis of a closure of the complaint. And then the 2201 program was also professionalized over the years, and now we have a contracted full-time 2201 administrator. I raise that because those are some themes that we saw in the May investigation, but some of those issues were already addressed. But there were other key findings in the, in the report, and there were key recommendations by the ad hoc committee that were implemented. So one of the issues that was very notable in the investigation conducted by May, that there was no external reporting or investigation of wrongdoing and pathway available to both employees and members of the public. Last year, in May of last year, the state, the board approved and we launched a state bar-specific whistleblower policy. And we have a contract with Department of Justice that serves as our investigative arm for any complaints involving improper governmental activities. We have a public-facing website that includes the form, the complaint form, and when somebody fills that complaint out, that goes directly to DOJ. And DOJ then, you know, investigates it and, you know, takes, makes appropriate recommendation. Since we launched the program in January of 2023, DOJ received 62 complaints in connection with state bar's whistleblower anti-retaliation program. 16 complaints were determined to be against California licensees, and they were referred to state bar's office of chief trial counsel. 28 complaints were closed by DOJ at intake because they were neither complaint of improper governmental activity against the state bar or complaint against a licensee attorney. So those were just closed. 17 complaints were closed after DOJ did some initial investigation and concluded that there were either no good faith allegations of improper governmental activity or it had raised to the level of requiring investigation. One of the complaints has moved into the investigation stage. However, we have not received, you know, a report or conclusion of that particular complaint. To date, the state bar has invoiced, we spent about $13,500 in connection with this program, and the board approved up to $100,000. The other area that is, I'm sure, pretty familiar to everyone here in the room is the area around conflict of interest. One of the themes that was identified as problematic in the May report was not having sufficient safeguards for impartial decision-making by state bar officials. And in partnership with Assembly Judiciary Committee as well, and the Senate Judiciary Committee, and the board's, you know, approval of legislative priorities recommended by the ad hoc committee, the SB40 included important amendments that extends, you know, additional conflict of interest rules to the state bar employees and trustees. It also amended the sort of non-financial personal interest conflict of interest provisions to be more expansive and to incorporate the common law standard, which previously didn't apply to the state bar employees and trustees. As the board is also aware, there were significant and comprehensive amendments to the board policy manual pertaining to enforcement mechanisms for, in situations where a board member might have a conflict. And those range from, you know, disqualifying the board member from participating in a vote to, you know, sanction and censure. And you'll hear more about that tomorrow as part of our training. Board training on conflict of interest is also a recommendation stemming from the ad hoc committee. And we quickly launched a conflict of interest training refresher, which was completed by the board in April of 2023. And we've enhanced that training and you will be presented the training on conflict of interest tomorrow in person. In continuing in this, on this theme of weak safeguards, there were also additional sort of recommendations that have been implemented in the 2201 program. The policies that OCTC implemented in connection with review of conflicts with each individual case were also implemented in the 2201 program. The 2201 program questionnaire was enhanced and improved in terms of the information that is being reported and was also integrated in our case management system. There is now a memorialized process for 2201 policies and directives that, in essence, allows the 22, requires the 2201 administrator to follow and adopt the policies of OCTC and of the organization. And if there is a need to deviate from those policies to ensure that 2201 program functions independently and has the discretion it needs, then they could make those changes and present them to discipline liaisons. That has been implemented. Process for oversight relating to attorney complaints against member of the board or staff directly reporting to trustees, that process is in the works and we hope to finalize it this year and has a lot to do with having appropriate budget available for the 22 administrator to access in the event there is an investigation needed against anyone that is on the board or individuals that report to the board. Similar to the OCTC conflict of interest directives, complaint review unit within my office also implemented similar conflict checks requirements for each request that comes in through, to our unit for review. And one area where we will be focusing on this year is review of state bar court policies on conflict of interest and ethics. The other major area of concern that was identified and key finding that was identified in the May report is sort of minimal reporting around on the Form 700s, which are intended to really bring to light potential areas of conflicts that individuals associated with state bar and state bar decision-making have. As the board is aware, you know, we have done a comprehensive update to the conflict of interest code that applies to board of trustees. That was identified by the board in January as an action item and further supported by the Supreme Court's order to us to move quickly on that. And that code was adopted by the Supreme Court in November of last year. We've extended the Form 700 reporting requirements to additional subentities per your action earlier today. Substantive updates to internal state bar Form 700 policies, processes, and notices are underway and should be completed by the end of the month. Board training on Form 700 is also scheduled for you tomorrow, and it will be provided by FPPC, which is the arm, it's the state commission that enforces compliance with these reporting requirements. And we, you know, earlier today, you also updated the conflict of interest court for designated employees for the state bar to enhance their reporting requirements to align with the decision-making authority they have. And we've also expressly extended the Form 700 reporting requirements to special deputy trial councils that are part of the 2201 program. I should say their reporting requirements have been enhanced. The other area that ad hoc committee focused on had to do with having continuous leader, you know, having continuous leadership positions. One of the things that I think was important for the ad hoc committee and also may have stemmed from the May report is that the brief stance in board leadership positions may not realize the full impact that could be made in terms of improvements and oversight. And so consistent with board, consistent board leadership was flagged as an important governance reform that should be implemented. So again, in partnership with Assembly, Senate Judiciary Committee and Assembly and Senate Judiciary Committees, SB40 included an amendment that would allow for a two-year term for the chair and vice chair of the board. Additionally, the ad hoc committee recommended that there be two-year staggered terms for discipline liaisons to help in the function of oversight over OCTC and 2201. And now CREW is also part of that discipline liaison's oversight role. There were also some gaps in checks and balances and, you know, including the ability to remove a board member for good cause. That is proposed and you've just wrote it to include in your legislative priorities amendments to the legislation that would allow us to do that. Then there are two items that are not addressed that are on our trajectory for this year. Policy for approval of state bar presentations and, you know, topic we've heard of a lot today is IT and IT safeguards. Finally, the ad hoc committee also made a recommendation around having a discipline monitor. And that would be, you know, a role that would support the board's oversight over the discipline system. That item was tabled after being proposed to, after being proposed at one of the board meetings, but it was simply tabled and we are bringing it back to you today for a discussion along with consideration whether or not there should be an independent board secretary to support board's activities. And with that, let me turn that over to Leah.
Sure, if you could advance the slide.
Sure.
So I think you teed these up, we can move forward. So we're going to start with the discipline monitor. You'll recall that this position, it was conceptualized or conceived at one point as even an inspector general, we came up, or the ad hoc committee came up with this idea. We suggested to the legislature that the position be established even outside of the reporting lines of the state bar board of trustees to be truly independent. The board heard from the inspector general for CDCR, and you also heard from a sort of similar position in the UC system. We included that as part of our June 2023 fee increase request. The legislature did not act on that. They didn't fund it. And I think in sort of informal conversations that the previous board chair had with the chair of Senate Judiciary Committee, there was a bit of a tepid board chair had with the Chair of Senate Judiciary Committee, there was a bit of a tepid response to this. Fast forward to today and preparing for this planning session, and some of the board members that we met with to support this work suggested that the board might want to revisit the idea of a discipline monitor. Clearly, we're not now talking about an independent inspector general, but rather a position that would be very focused on supporting the board in exercising its oversight function over the discipline system. So to that end, it on this slide, and then a hyperlink to this slide is the draft position description, you can see the kind of activities that this position would conduct. Some of this is happening on a kind of a, I'm not going to say a haphazard because that's not fair to the staff, but it's happening. Those of you that are discipline liaisons know that you see a pretty detailed dashboard every quarter. A less detailed version is presented at the board meetings, but it is fair for me to say we do not have staff that are dedicated to doing this, to doing the kind of analysis that I think really might advance the ability of the board to oversee the discipline system. And you aren't getting that kind of look at the entirety of the discipline system. There's a lot of focus on OCTC. In the last year, we've added some on your special deputy trial counsel program. A little bit is coming on the complaint review unit. The state bar court is completely, I think, you know, we have not addressed that. So the question for this body is, is this something you want to consider? I will say there is a position, a compliance position, that has been in the budget. It's a vacant position. So if this is something that you wanted to do, we have a position that could be used for this purpose. I think they would need to have a support staff person added, but we have the makings for some budget for this already reflected in the budget that you've seen. So with that, I will pause here and see if the board has any thoughts or discussion, particularly those of you that were really involved in developing this concept initially.
All right. Any comments on the discipline monitor, particularly looking at those who are on the ad hoc commission?
So I will say that as somebody who has served as discipline liaison to OCTC and now most recently to SDTC, I do feel like it's challenging to exercise oversight in the limited amount of time that we have and the limited resources that we have as board members to really, you know, understand what is going on. We do have a dashboard, which has helped enormously in being able to track metrics and understand the data that's presented, but it it has felt challenging to feel like, are we exercising appropriate oversight? So I would welcome more support in that regard. I think the proposal probably does need to be fleshed out more. I understand the tepid response that we received was in part because of a, you know, a lack of trust in in the state bar being able to sort of monitor itself, but to me, this would be an improvement in how we exercise our oversight function.
Any other viewpoints on that? First, Shelby?
I mean, I, I appreciate trustee Chen's observations, and I think it just comes down to this brass tacks, right? Either you're going to allow us to receive what we need from licensees, and I loved the conversation that trustee Huser was having as it related to where you are in terms of your legal career and the ability and who should be paying what where and how it gets paid. I definitely think that's a conversation that has to be had, and I think that's a conversation that has to be had with the, with with the Assembly Judiciary Committee and the Senate Judiciary Committee in relation to who are we, who are we getting our fees from? But I guess my thing is this, and I, and I understand this thirty-nine billion dollar, what is it now, thirty-nine point four, thirty-nine point seven billion dollar deficit, but at the end of the day, we can't be held accountable if we don't have the resources to do what they want us to do. And so until you have resources to be able to to have a discipline monitor or an inspector general or a board secretary, I mean, we all have very full lives. And I, and and I'm, I have to say this, just the conversation that we're having, right? I'm just reflecting back to coming to this group in December of 2020, and what we have done in the timeframe in terms of really addressing deep distrust, mistrust and distrust, and even with relationships, you know, at times being hospitable, at times being fractured, to be at this point where we have these level of recommendations and we've made these improvements where we've had the opportunity to. You know, I don't want to toot our own horn, but we've done a lot of work. We've done a lot of really difficult, hard work where we didn't all necessarily agree, but we came to some level of a consensus, regardless of what our opinions are. And so I think at the end of the day, this becomes another one of those difficult decisions, right? Do we push in an area where we may not necessarily be resourced, but we know that it ties into oversight, transparency and accountability? See, I'm so choked up over this, I just don't know what to do.
Well said.
Also, I mean, I know it's not really on the table, but I also just wanted to add one item to General Counsel Dobtien's presentation on Form, on the Form 700 issue, which is that the Audit Committee in its recent meeting talked about operationalizing additional oversight over making sure that Form 700s were being timely responded to and returned, and we talked about having in at least an internal review of it, but also at least for the first few years in which we're trying to really make this change and build public trust that we're doing things correctly, having an outside, someone from the outside come in and review and make sure that we are actually collecting them and people are responding to them.
And that's, that's a great point, and we also have built-in metrics around that as well. And, and I didn't get a chance to mention, but there's a trans, there is a transparency and accountability website now available, publicly available that reports compliance. And so, yes, thank you for reminding us.
Yeah, so I mean, I take trustee Shelby's point that like, you know, should we be pushing in this area where we've already sort of been told, you know, not interested in this, but there are additional things we could be focusing on in areas where there has been real scrutiny, there have been findings that we have fallen short in those areas, and perhaps we should be spending our resources, taking another look at them and making sure that we are operationalizing them in a way that they remain, that these procedures remain robust and will outlive our tenures on the board.
Yes, trustee Tony.
Quick, quick response, a couple of things. One is that, you know, we clearly need to be responsive to questions and concerns that have been brought up by legislative leadership. And I know we'll keep in mind the questions and concerns that were brought up at the hearing last year, where several of us went and a number of people presented and were responded to questions. I also want to remind ourselves that the budget process, the way that they work in the legislature is that the chambers take turns, the Senate, then the Assembly. And we do have, in the Assembly this year, a new chair of judiciary, and that's a real opportunity because in some ways it's a fresh start for us. So I really support trustee Chen's suggestion that, you know, maybe we didn't get an enthusiastic response last time. That was from the chamber that took the lead on the fee bill, but I think with the other chamber is this time with the new chair, I think we ought to just look at it as a fresh opportunity.
To trustee Chen's point as far as fleshing out what a discipline monitor would do and just what that looks like, I think in reality, would it make sense to have the discipline liaisons work with staff to, I guess, to inform that work?
Sure. And I think part of that should be the reporting lines as well.
Yep.
All right, so it looks like.
We have one last slide.
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I would just say that makes sense to me. I would echo trustee Shelby and trustee Chen's comments, trustee Shelby's comments, particularly around the, the immense amount of work that we've tackled over the last couple of years, particularly in this area. And, you know, I would just like to thank those two members of the ad hoc committee again for, for the amount of time and attention that they spent, you know, along with me on, on, on what you're seeing reflected, reflected here. The one thing I would make note of is, is that during those discussions, you know, there were times that we talked about things that were essentially low-hanging fruit, but we also talked about a continuum. This was going to be a continuum of work that needed to be, that we needed to continue to add to. And to me, what we're talking about today in terms of the, the discipline monitor and possibly the board, the independent board secretary as well, are part of that continuum of work. And so, you know, I'd, I'd land on the side of us, us continuing to push here.
All right. I think that messaging is clear.
Okay, if we could go one slide and make the slides full screen. All right, so one of the other issues that was identified by the ad hoc committee but not addressed was this idea of an independent board secretary. And right now you have a board secretary, Luisa, who is also my right-hand person and does many, many things, but is not independent, and the board secretary at the state bar does not report to the board, but reports to the executive director. So one of the things that the ad hoc committee was interested in is learning more about the role of the independent board secretary, particularly in relation to this question of providing support to the board to exercise its oversight functions. And to that end, Luisa and I were actually asked to speak to the former board secretary for the UC Regents, the first independent secretary for that system. And we finally did that, I don't know when, maybe a month ago, and it was a really interesting conversation to hear about some of the dynamics in that system that resulted in the establishment of this independent position. Really, the, the position was created there to be the eyes and ears for the Regents vis a vis the administration. And it suggested a little bit perhaps of a lack of a trusting relationship. And so what I note here is, you know, I, I hope that doesn't apply in our state bar context, and so I'm not so sure you need to take that particular step, but there certainly were things that I thought were interesting and useful for the board to consider. One, in that model, the board is very active in setting the agendas for meetings and setting the agenda for what you're going to do. That is very different from our model where the agendas are very staff-driven. I do review them with the chair and the vice chair before they're finalized, but it is staff-driven. Some trustees have asked how to get things on the agenda, and of course, we accommodate that, but there is no process. So one of my suggestions is that that's something that we change and create a structured process for the board to be involved in agenda setting. The other piece that I thought was interesting is that in the independent board secretary model, the independent board secretary is not just one person, it is a staff team that is providing independent analytical support. So working up analyses of things that, say, the executive director is bringing forward to the board, there'd be sort of an independent analysis of that item. Again, I don't know that you need that and that we warrant that for every single item, but on some issues, I think it does make sense to have sort of independent consulting or professional support for the board. And where we saw that most recently was with respect to the sale of 180 Howard Street. Some board members expressed a number of concerns about that, and one of our trustees with a lot of relationships in that space did identify a team of consultants for us to, to work with, who really worked independently and provided their own independent analysis to the board. And I think in the end, that made for a stronger product and a more robust conversation on the part of the board and increased the comfort level around that decision to sell 180 Howard Street. So that's another aspect of that independent board secretary model that I would like the board to consider. We would have to come up for a process again about when is it warranted or needed to have that kind of independent consulting support. But I can think about a few issues coming up, particularly in the admissions space, where you may benefit from that. So those, those are like very quickly the highlights that I have. And Luisa, I'm not meaning to put you on the spot, I know you're busy, but I don't know if you have any other highlights to add, but it was, it was an interesting conversation. So I'll just leave it there, see if there are any reactions, if the board is generally comfortable with this direction, I would want to work on advancing these ideas further, probably with the chair and vice chair in the first instance.
All right. Any gut reactions?
I have a question.
Yes, trustee Buena Ventura.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So I was, I was curious about trying to get an item on the agenda without violating the Bagley King issue. And so isn't it if, if I talk to another trustee and I, you know, say, hey, look, what do you think about us putting on this agenda? Isn't that, that very conversation, am I treading the line there? And I guess I'm, I'm, I just, I go, I want some guidance on how I could do it without violating any Bagley King.
I mean, the key is not to engage in discussions that would include the quorum of any of the Bagley King, you know, committees. That's like just one way of approaching it, but maybe we can have an offline conversation to kind of help in that, but raising it with just the chair, right? I don't think would be, you know, a Bagley King violation if it's just proposed to the chair and then chair can make the decision. We can certainly work around a process for doing that in a way that is compliant with the Bagley King requirements. And if it needs to be a board discussion, there could be an agenda item posted on the, one of the board meetings to kind of discuss items that could come in the future. So just some ideas to put out there.
And I certainly welcome a more formalized procedure, and I think, you know, just for, just from an organizational standpoint, I think that makes a lot of sense. So definitely support that.
Could I just add that I've seen a number of boards and commissions in the city landscape that include as a standing agenda item, something called new business, where members of the body can introduce whatever topic they would like to see added to a future agenda. I don't know what the process is for vetting, how that comes back to the body, and obviously it could present some amount of work for staff, which also needs to perhaps be discussed if it's too voluminous or something like that. But nevertheless, I think I've seen other channels that, in a rather simple way, offer the board an opportunity to weigh in.
Yes, trustee Sowell.
Leah, in your, your comments about the, the discipline monitor, you said that there was an in-house position that potentially could be converted to do that. Do we have any sort of similar abilities or with an independent board secretary, or this would actually be a, a plus-up, a new add?
If you created it, it would be a new add.
Would there be significant overlap between independent board secretary or this kind of IG position? Is there a way to combine aspects of the two into one position? But I see some, some tie-ins.
I mean, I think that the part about, you know, where you would have some additional support in working up issues coming before the board, certainly those related to the discipline system, which is everything presumably on your RAD agenda. discipline system, which is everything presumably on your rad agenda or much of it. Perhaps the discipline monitor could be tasked with that. I think a true independent board secretary model, again, it's, as I understand, it's not really one person, it is kind of a team. So I'm not, I'm not sure, but some aspects I guess could be woven into the discipline monitor role. I'm not, I'm not sure.
And then query whether, I mean, I guess we'd have to really think hard about what a discipline monitor would, what information they would have access to because do we run afoul of keeping OCTC and SDTC working separate, right?
Yeah, it could get messy. Yes, trustee Tony.
Just one consideration to think about is we have a, a structure now where we have three independent leaders that report directly to the board. We have the executive director, we have the chief trial counsel, and we have the general counsel. And what that means is that we have the responsibility for, when necessary, doing the hiring process. I think all three were hired during the tenure I've been here for the past three years. It means that we're responsible for doing yearly evaluations for all three. Okay? And so I think the case has been made of the value of the discipline monitor that I, I, I think that if we can figure it out, it may be worth it. But understand that it, for it to be an independent monitor, it then means that the board would need to go through the process of, you know, when Leah was, you know, said there's a position we may be able to convert, it's, she, I don't believe she was talking about there's an individual on staff that's, can be assigned to do it, but that we would then as a board have to take the responsibility of doing the, probably national search like we've done before, get a search firm, do all, do all that, and then make the commitment to add that individual to a rotation. I'm saying that because I'm a little hesitant to, at the same time, add an independent board secretary to make it five. So those are things I think about.
Points well taken. Yes, trustee Chen.
Isn't it four because the SDTC administrator is also in that category? Yes. It just underscores your point.
But wait, there's more.
Yeah.
All right, trustee Good.
I just wanted to say I don't think we need an independent board secretary. I'd save the money and the effort and I personally don't think we need it. I think if there's a one-off situation where we want to bring in consultants, you know, as we did vis a vis the sale of the San Francisco building, we can do that as a one-off situation rather than building in yet more bureaucracy. So that would kind of be my vote.
Anybody have any strong feelings on that, Sharon, in that viewpoint of trustee Good? Yes, trustee Barahona.
Yeah, just one question with the independent board secretary. Does this also reduce your workload to a certain degree? Because that hasn't been mentioned. And so I'm just curi, I have some curiosity on, it seems like folks are stretched.
You get that sense?
Sorry. I was trying.
How would you get? How would you guess?
And so, and so given that, and, and we want to presume, preserve talented individuals on our team, we, this also I think helps us do that. And so I was, I was with you trustee Good, I was sort of similar, my first instinct was like, yeah, that doesn't, that doesn't seem necessary, but, but it'd be great to hear how this would support your workload.
I don't know because I've never, I've never had it. I can imagine that it would and Louisa's as well, assuming she wouldn't go off to be the independent board secretary. These, I'd have an assistant who's not also doing other things. So I think from a workload perspective, the model in the UC system, interestingly, they reverted back to the traditional model, as I understand it. What I, what we heard, I doubt was less work for the president of that system because the independent board secretary is actually sort of there to challenge some of the things that the president is doing. So in that, in that situation, you know, I'm not sure that would be less work. And sometimes it might be perfectly appropriate. Again, I, I, I didn't walk away from that conversation feeling like that's what we need. I think there's been times in the state bar, previous scandals well-known, that probably the board would have benefited from that. But I, I don't, I don't think you need it now, but there were these takeaways from that model that I thought would be quite helpful to try to move forward.
Yes.
I think I tend to agree that we don't need it, but I do want to have a conversation about how board members can put items on the agenda and whether we need a, an actual process that we follow to do that, so.
All right. Any other further direction staff feels they need?
No, no further direction, but just for the record, I realized in my comments where I was expressing sort of my thanks for all the work that everybody has done, I enumerated the members of the ad hoc committee, but I didn't thank the members of the board or the members of the staff for all the, for all the work that they, they put into all of this. And I just, for the record, want to make sure that I, I express that as well.
Absolutely. All right. So if there's nothing else, I think we can adjourn the meeting for today.
And we can start tomorrow at 10:00 AM for the hard start for your training that you'll receive from 10 to 12.
They'll get all, yeah, I know. Everybody's super stoked. All right. Yeah, we'll see everybody tomorrow. Thank you.